And if you would stand with us for a pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Sandy, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Shippers.
I'm here.
Allen Bass.
President.
Ingalls.
Here.
King. Mayor Felkins.
Here.
At this time, if someone would like to make a motion to approve the agenda as it's been presented to us this evening?
I'd make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Support. Councilmember Allen Bass.
Yes.
Ingalls.
Yes.
King. Shippers.
Yes.
Mayor Felkins.
Yes. Motion carries. At this time, we'll open the floor for our first public comment this evening. We do ask if you come forward, if you would please state your full name and then write down your address. For the clerk, it would be greatly appreciated. And if you could keep your comments to three minutes or less, that would also be appreciated. Thank you.
I'll start. Thank you. Bob Durant, City Cadillac resident. And I guess I just have a couple, or I'm asking the council to review some of the ordinances that they're trying to adapt or change. Number one, the marijuana ordinance, it's legal in the state of Michigan. And it's no different that if my neighbor's smoking a cigar or a cigarette and I don't like it, I don't have any recourse. I don't know how the council can even have that one on there. As far as exhibition of driving on the public hearing on that one, I've been ticketed for reckless and/or careless driving for doing exactly that. I don't know why we didn't ordinance and more work for the police to do when they're doing a great job now. It just seems like a lot more paperwork, a lot more stuff for them to do. I'm not going to get into the snowmobiles, that's not my point. The noise regulations, I've always, they've always had noise rate tickets. My daughter got one. I've gotten one before, it's a fix-it ticket, get it taken care of. So I don't know, I guess I don't understand why all these changes have to happen when they're already on the books. I just don't get it. And then they're talking about the snowmobiles. Snowmobiles are way louder than motorcycles. Motorcycle, you can let off on it and it's quiet. Snowmobiles don't work that way. So that's something you're, I just feel the council needs to go back, go back through these, go through them a little farther, maybe ask people, general public people questions that have snowmobiles, motorcycles, everything else. I just don't understand what this is all about. Okay? Thank you much.
Council David McMahon, I'm here basically based on what I read in the newspaper, hopefully that was correct. And the issue of motorcycle noise. I'm not an 18-year-old that wants to aggravate my elders. But there are numerous two-wheelers that are in this community that do serve a purpose. And I don't know what the purpose is in terms of and what the volume is regarding noise. I guess I would just say for consideration that when I bought my Harley, I bought it with the idea that the pipes were loud and I play the biggest, ugliest, long-hair music I can find on my radio when I'm traveling in northern Michigan, to keep the deer and the critters back in the woods. It is a safety aspect when it comes to the noise of a motorcycle. I don't ride in the right-hand lane when I am in downtown Cadillac with car doors, whatever. Motorcycles have to have other considerations for safety. And loudness, or at least volume, is one of those when it comes to riding a motorcycle. We have a number of people that are two-wheelers that take that vehicle to work. And so you're going to hamper people, I guess, if they can't ride a motorcycle through downtown Cadillac who are attempting to get to work, at least during good weather. And there are a lot of motorcycles and Cadillac, there's a lot of businesses that proffer from motorcycles being here. And I would just hate to see that there would be some kind of a dent, I've never heard of this kind of thing. If there's already noise ordinances on the books, then if we're pulled over, the police officer is going to give us a warning, is going to give us a ticket, and we'll have to deal with it at that point. I'm not sure why there needs to be additional things directed towards motorcycles. Thank you.
Jeff Anderson from Cadillac. I'd like to see a decimal number put on if you're going to have an ordinance. And otherwise, we have nothing to go to court with. You know, if we do get a ticket, it's up to the discretion of the officer. Not all of them are the same. So I think you need a number on a decimal. And I believe all the police cars have a decimal meter, so it wouldn't be anything new to purchase. The next thing is the driving, changing lanes. How many times can you change a lane in a city block, or is the whole length of the city Cadillac? I think those both need numbers put on them.
Patrick Barnes, City of Cadillac. I do ride. But you take a nice summer evening, how many motorcycles are sitting in town at establishments? There are an awful lot of them. Motorcyclists do bring a lot of money when they come to town. If they want to do something, they're going to spend money in this town. For eats, gas, what-have-you, entertainment. And me, I ride my bike to work in the summertime if it's nice every day. If I can't ride in the city Cadillac, I may as well move. Because there ain't no sense in having it.
Good evening. My name is Angel Vallejo, I am a current Cadillac resident, and I'm also here on behalf of the Cadillac Leadership Program. First and foremost, I want to say thank you for your service and thank you for providing this platform for the community. And I'm just here just to, just share, there's an opportunity. Every year, the Cadillac Leadership Program does a project in the community. And this year, we're going alongside with another organization and working on the old cast fields, Kaiser Fields is what they're called. And we're going to be helping renovate that field there. So there's an opportunity to leave a legacy for business owners and also for family, families in the community that want to get involved. I did bring some paperwork with more info. And I just want to say thank you, and we would love your support.
Angel, could you please leave the paperwork with our city clerk?
Absolutely.
We'll get it out. Thank you.
Hi, Scott Jones, I'm a resident here in Cadillac. I own a place here in Cadillac, and I also own a motorcycle. How do I get in and out of town? If you're going to ban it. And how can you just say Harley-Davidsons? Who's, ain't that discrimination? There's louder motorcycles out there and a lot of Harleys. There's a lot of cars out there that are louder than these little cars, these little four-cylinders. They put their mufflers on there, they're louder than anything. I think you're just picking on a Harley-Davidson. And you probably shouldn't really be real careful about doing that because Harley-Davidson would probably like to get involved with this. You're discriminating against them.
Linda Durant, I do live here in Cadillac. And I'm just curious of why some of these ordinance are even necessary. A number of these things are laws on the book. I don't think prostitution is legal in Michigan. So why does there have to be an ordinance on this? It seems like it's just repeating what's already out here. And my question is, you can cite property owners for prostitution, gambling, illegal sale, or use of intoxicating liquor or controlled substances. And it's talking about on your property. Is that saying I can't sit in the yard and drink a glass of wine? Because I'm going to. But I don't understand why there has to be an ordinance against these things. It seems like it's just extra work for you, extra work to make things that we already have in place. I guess I would like some clarification of what that means, of what you can't do in your yard. Thank you.
Can I come back up and say one more?
There's another opportunity at the end of the meeting.
Oh, okay.
Douglas Smith. I don't live in Cadillac, but can I still do this? All right. So I live in Manten, or actually Masaki County. And loud pipes save lives. And I think you guys are worried about, like everybody said here, these laws are in effect everywhere. We got crackheads walking the street everywhere. Let's worry about that.
And again, there's tons of money that's spent by motorcycles in every town. We travel all over the world.
Okay, seeing no one else, we'll close the first public comment and move to the approval of the consent agenda. This evening, we do have the minutes from our regular meeting that was held on February 7th, 2022.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'd second that.
Councilmember King. Shippers.
Yes.
Allen Bass.
Yes.
Ingalls.
Yes.
Mayor Felkins.
Yes. Motion carries. This evening, we do have a community spotlight, Republic Services. Marcus, would you like to introduce?
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor, members of the city council. This evening, we have Matt Bialett with us from Republic Services. Republic Services is the company that the city has a franchise agreement with for collection of all of our household residential, residential waste and yard waste. Matt is our municipal services manager and has been now for quite a number of years and has some great news to share with us this evening.
Good evening, Mrs. Mayor and member of the council. I just wanted to come before you tonight, first of all, to, again, thank you guys for your partnership over the years. Last time I was before you, we were talking about Cadillac Commons. We had given you a check for $10,000. Marcus made us aware of an opportunity for the White Trail Head Project. And so we come before you tonight with another check for $5,881 to fund the trailhead project and the solid waste services that are going to be located there. And so we just wanted to come before you tonight and give you guys that check. And thank you again for being a good community partner. Republic Services likes to participate in these things, and where the opportunities are made for us, we'd like to come forward and give that, so.
Matt, thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's wonderful.
Ready?
I am ready. Okay, moving on to communications.
Moving on to communications this evening, we have Joe Verlin from Gabridge &amp; Company. Joe, it's always great to see you. And Joe is here this evening with the annual presentation of the findings of our audit report.
Thank you. I know everybody loves to see the auditor, so. I thank the council, I do appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. And we certainly appreciate all the effort that the city staff has put together to work with us and prepare this 200-page document from start to finish. Very smooth process. We took the numbers that were provided to us, the financial statements, we verified and confirmed the revenues, the expenditures, the assets and liabilities. We worked with the county, state of Michigan, the Michigan Department of Transportation, various financial institutions, and validate the numbers provided to us. And ultimately, we got to the point where we provided a clean opinion on the city's financial statements. Before I get to that, I do want to point out a couple of things that make the City of Cadillac's report unique. If you go to page four of the bound copy of the report, we see here that the awards and acknowledgements section of this page shows that this is the 36th consecutive year that the city has received the certificate of achievement, certificate of excellence in financial reporting. And what that means is that not only does the city prepare and have its financial statements audited, but it also goes through the effort of preparing an introductory section, some statistical information to provide more information to the readers of its financial statements. Just more transparency, more information. We can see all kinds of demographics and trend information of the city's finances for the past 10 years. It's just a way that the city can go above and beyond to promote transparency in its financial reporting. And again, it's been 36 consecutive years that the city has compiled all that information, submitted it to the Government Finance Officers Association for the award. And it's just a matter of going above and beyond. And certainly, as kudos to the staff for continuing to demonstrate that commitment to excellence. And on the very next page, page five, we see the certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. And approximately 5% of the local units of government in the state of Michigan get this award. So definitely as a way of standing out. Again, kudos to the staff for doing this because it is a significant amount of additional work that goes into putting this together. Going through the rest of the report, I'm not planning on covering every page tonight. I'm just going to cover the highlights, but certainly if there are questions, I'm happy to take them. If you go to page 10, we get to the opinion paragraph. And in this audit report, this is what matters more than anything else. And at the very top paragraph, we write, "In our opinion, the financial statements present fairly in all material respects the financial position of the City of Cadillac as of June 30, 2021." And again, what that means is that everything provided to us was verified, proven to be correct. Your controls are suitably designed and being carried out effectively to make sure that you have accurate, timely financial statements. It does mean something to get a clean opinion on your financial statements, but it should always be the city's goal to get that clean opinion on your financials. Very next paragraph down, we see a change in accounting principle. This comes along every three to five years, we see this type of a paragraph. What we're doing is we're pointing out to the readers of the financial statements that there is a new accounting pronouncement that the city adopted during 2021. So governmental accounting standard board statement number 84, the fiduciary activities, was implemented during the course of the year. Doesn't change much. Instead of referring to your fiduciary funds as agency funds, now we call them custodial funds. Not a huge change, but we did want to make sure that we pointed out to the readers of the financial statements that the city did adopt that new standard. If we go now to page 13, we get into the first page of the management discussion and analysis section of the audit report. This section is useful because it provides about 10 to 12 pages of financial highlights. We can see two-year comparative information to get an idea for some of the trends that the city is showing with its revenues and expenses for the past couple of years. Then we get some narrative that explains reasons for this significant changes and some of the trends that the city is showing in its financials. So that first bullet point in the financial highlight section shows that the total net position of the city increased by $2,374,328 during the 12 months ended June 30, 2021. So if the reader were to ask themselves, is the city better off at June 30, 2021 than it was at June 30, 2020? The answer is yes, by about $2.37 million. So in other words, your revenues exceeded your expenses, city is operating at a sustainable level, and your financial position is trending in a positive direction. That's on the long-term basis of accounting, the same basis of accounting that a corporation would use in the corporate world, we would call that net income. Second bullet point down, now we're looking just at the funds of the city, the governmental funds, primarily your general fund, your major and local street funds. And this is on the short-term basis of accounting, so we're looking at how much cash came into the city compared to cash out during the course of the year. And we can see that the total fund balances increased by just over $3 million. And what that means is that if you look at your checkbook, so to speak, there's about $3 million more came into the city's funds during 2021 compared to the cash out. And then if we look, focus just on the general fund, your most important fund, we can see the general fund had an increase in fund balance of $972,937. So a lot of the increase in fund balance had to do with bonds that the city received during the course of the year. But even when we back off those bonds and we back off the capital related to those bonds, and we focus just on your general fund, you can see a very healthy increase in your general fund fund balance, certainly a very good sign. And then the last thing I wanted to point out, the very last bullet point on the financial highlight section, we can see that the total debt increased by about $4.6 million during the course of the year. And again, that was primarily the bonding that went into the, into the major and local streets and various funds of the city for upcoming projects. We're probably going to see a decrease in your fund balances in the ensuing years because that's what the bond funds are there for. But there was an increase in your bonds or your long-term debt by about $4.6 million. Next, if you go all the way to page 33, we get a look at the enterprise funds for the city, or the business-type funds, primarily the water and sewer fund. And this is the statement of cash flows. This shows how much cash the city generated from its day-to-day operations compared to the amount of cash that was consumed for your long-term reinvestment in infrastructure and pay-down of long-term debt, things of those nature. So the very top row on page, or the very top section on page 33 shows that the total enterprise funds had an increase in cash of $2.6 million. In other words, the cash in that you received during the course of the year from the day-to-day operations exceeded your cash out by $2.6 million. And then if you look about halfway down, we can see that the city used about $1,148,832 of cash to cover your long-term debt obligations, both the principal and the interest, as well as the infrastructure that was purchased during the course of the year. Then altogether, three, four rows down from there, we can see that the city had a net increase in cash of $1.545 million in your, your business-type funds during the course of the year. Just demonstrating that you're operating, your utility funds, primarily your water and sewer fund, at a sustainable level. You're generating positive cash flows. Next, if you go all the way to page 87, we get into the, I still think of them as being the new schedules. These have been around for seven years now. These are the net pension liability schedules, as well as the retiree healthcare schedules. And this just shows for the past, actually, eight years, because you guys have your own fund, a standalone fund. We've got actually eight years' worth of history here showing the funding progress that the city has made on funding both its police and fire plan, as well as your MERS defined benefit pension plan. Page 87 shows that your funding percentage, if you go three rows up from the bottom, your fiduciary net position is 97.6% funded. What that means is that in order to fully fund your police and fire plan, your police and fire defined benefit pension plan over the next 30 or 40 or 50 years, it's going to be about $14.2 million, your total pension liability, about one-third of the way down the page. In order to cover that liability, that's an actuarial estimate, that's what they think, that they're following all of their methodology for figuring out what those long-term cash outflows are going to be. Two-thirds of the way down, we can see the planned fiduciary net position or your total assets came in about $13,856,475. And the difference being a total, our net pension liability of $343,000. That 97% funding percentage is about 25 points better than average, so you're very well-funded. The biggest reason for that, halfway down the page, we see the net investment income during 2021, just over $3 million. Very strong year in terms of the earnings on those police and fire pension assets. So very strong investment year, that certainly helped bump up your funding percentage to the almost 98%. If you go now to page 90, we get a look at the very same schedule for your MERS retirement plan. Here, we have seven years of comparative data, slightly different plan type, thus, we only have seven years' worth of data. Ultimately, we will have 10 years for both of these plans of comparative data. The very first column, 2020, this is, these numbers are as of December 31st, 2020, because the MERS Retirement Board has a calendar year-end. We can see, again, the total pension liability is about $14.8 million to cover the rest of the defined benefit pension plan for all the MERS retirees. And then planned fiduciary net position, your MERS assets came in at about $11.1 million. Total net pension liability is about $3.7 million if we take the total assets away from your total liability. There's about $3.7 million. City still has 18 years to fully fund that liability, you're well on track to do so. And if we take your total assets and divide it by your total liability, you're at 74.8% funded. So about 75%, still two or three points better than average. If you look four rows down from the top, you can see that there was a change in assumptions for each of the past two years. So in 2019, the MERS Retirement Board decreased the long-term rate of return on your, the decreased expected long-term rate of return on your pension assets from 8% down to 7.6%. That bumped up your total liability by about $407,000, 2020. Similarly, they looked at other estimates, and they looked at various demographics and life expectancies, things of that nature. They added almost another $400,000 to your total liability. We should see that stop. I'm not aware of any other further changes in assumptions that they're planning on booking. But that was about $800,000 of unfavorable increased total pension liability that's been absorbed by the city for the past two years. Even with that, you're still at 75% funded, 74.8% funded. So you're trending in the right direction there, you're up from 74.1% the year before. And again, you're two or three points better than average. So well on track with your MERS funding percentage, again, 18 more years to fully fund that $3.7 million. And then lastly, the last item I wanted to point out is on page 92. This is the fifth year now that the city has been, has implemented its retiree healthcare obligation, the reporting of your total OPEB, or your net OPEB liability. So this is the total, if we look about one-third of the way down, the total OPEB liability, according to the actuaries, at June 30, 2021, is about $4.3 million. Again, that's the amount of total cash outflows over the next 30 or 40 years. They think will be about $4.3 million. To cover that, the planned fiduciary net position, the city has set aside into an irrevocable trust about $4.25 million to cover that total retiree healthcare obligation. And that leaves you guys with about a $22,000 net OPEB liability. Most of our clients have maybe 5% or 10% funded. You guys are at 99.5% funded on your retiree healthcare funding. So well ahead of schedule. Again, if you look about halfway down, you see the net investment income. Because the city has been prudent and has been setting aside funds, you were able to generate $934,000 of investment income on your retiree healthcare assets. And that's pulling the burden right off of your funds. When you're able to have those funds set aside, they're generating those positive investment income. It's helping your future budgeting processing. So taking a lot of burden off of the taxpayers, as well as the general fund for years to come, $22,000 is very well-funded. 99.5%, again, probably about 80 or so percent better funded than the most than the most of our clients. So very prudent, very much right on track to cover that total retiree healthcare liability. So those are the financial highlights I've got. I'm certainly happy to take any further questions the council might have.
I don't think I have anything. Thank you so much, it was good to see you again.
Yeah, yeah, nice to be here, I always appreciate it.
With the good news, yes.
With the good news, right? Good job, and, good job, Owen.
Call it. Thank you.
I appreciate it. Okay, let's go back to here. Okay, and that will take us under the communications category to downtown sidewalk cafes.
Yes, it's being recommended to approve the request from Clam Lake Beer Company, Herman's European Cafe, Raven Social, and the Roaring Twenty Saloon to have sidewalk cafes in front of their businesses in 2022, subject to the conditions noted.
I'll make a motion to approve the request from Clam Lake Beer Company, Herman's European Cafe, Raven Social, and the Roaring Twenty Saloon to have sidewalk cafes in front of their businesses in 2022, subject to the conditions noted.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Alabas?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
King, Mayor Folkins?
Yes, motion carries. And that takes us to some appointments, or reappointments, I should say.
Being recommended to approve the appointment of Mike Coy to the Election Commission for a four-year term to expire on March 7, 2026.
I'd make a motion to approve the appointment of Mike Coy to the Election Commission for a four-year term to expire on March 7, 2026.
Councilmember Alabas?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
King, Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Folkins?
Yes, motion carries.
Being recommended to approve the appointment of Robert Munger to the Downtown Development Authority for a four-year term to expire on March 7, 2026.
I will make a motion to approve the appointment of Robert Munger to the Downtown Development Authority for a four-year term to expire on March 7, 2026.
Support. Councilmember Ingles?
Yes.
King, Shippers?
Yes.
Alabas?
Yes.
Mayor Folkins?
Yes, motion carries.
Being recommended to approve the reappointment of Chris Huckle to the Downtown Development Authority for a four-year term to expire on March 7, 2026.
I'll make a motion to approve the reappointment of Chris Huckle to the Downtown Development Authority for a four-year term to expire on March 7, 2026.
I'd second that.
Councilmember King, Shippers?
Yes.
Alabas?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
Mayor Folkins?
Yes, motion carries. And note, Chris has actually served on that authority since 2006.
Well, that'll make it 20 years.
Great, thank you. Okay, that takes us to the city manager's report for this evening.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. It is that time of year again, and honestly, we would have probably requested the setting of our strategic planning work sessions regarding budgeting a little bit earlier, but due to COVID and due to inclement weather, this is, this is the first meeting as we're rounding the corner here. And so the request this evening is to set our various budget-related work sessions as follows, with the first one being March 21 at 3:15 p.m., and the second being on April 4 at 4:15 p.m.
I'll make a motion to approve the fiscal year 2023 budget work session dates and times as presented.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Alabas?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
King, Mayor Folkins?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you, members of the city council. The next item is the annual hardship or poverty exemption policy. The council communication illustrates how this is required pursuant to Public Act 390. The recommendation this evening would be to approve the exemption policy using the 2021 Health and Human Services Poverty Guideline, as well as a $50,000 asset guideline, excluding the primary home.
How long has that number been at $50,000?
Several years. Do you know, Owen, by any chance?
Yeah, I don't know, it's time ahead, I can find out.
We'd have to find out.
Why?
I was just, I'm on the Board of Review, we have our organizational meeting tomorrow, and I know inflation's been going up, things have been changing, and I mean, I think next time we do this, we should have a small report about how long it's been there and what the other communities with the same income level as us are at. But I'm fine with that this year.
And we did double-check with our assessor too, before bringing the recommendation.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
I'd make a motion to adopt the updated hardship poverty exemption policy utilizing the 2021 Health and Human Services Poverty Guidelines, as well as a $50,000 asset guideline, excluding the primary home.
Support. Councilmember Alabas?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
King, Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Folkins?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. The next item is conceptual plans for potential snowmobile routes. To provide some backdrop before I invite John Wallace to the podium or to a microphone, where is he? There he is. He has some slides showing the routes. This has been, you know, an off-and-on type conversation for as long as I've been here in the city and as your manager, and I'm going to guess that it's probably been even going on before then, and I've been here for 11 years. The city, quite a while ago, used to allow for snowmobiles to be ridden around town. There's sort of myth as to how and why that stopped, but it did stop. And ever since then, there's been discussion, again, every so often from interested parties about wanting to see their access again granted. As of late, I know that there's been some loose conversation from some of our downtown merchants that asked us to revisit whether or not there's a way of getting snowmobiles closer into the downtown area. They're already able to be access, accessing businesses on the west end of town off of 115, but there really isn't any legitimate access on the east side of town. There really isn't a sort of silver bullet solution to this. So, you know, there are certainly folks that don't think that we should have the snowmobiles in town, and then there are folks that think, you know, that we should have them in town. And no matter what direction council ultimately goes, which just is sort of an FYI, there's no pressure to make any sort of determination this evening. You know, ultimately, there's going to be pockets of people that are going to be disappointed, either the folks that want it or don't want it, depending upon which way you go. And likewise, when it comes to the routing, you know, there's only a certain number of public streets in certain areas that frankly, we have available to us, and what our community development staff looked at trying to do is to try to create concepts to limit exposure to residential areas as best as possible, but realistically, it's impossible to limit entirely. I can state that we are not recommending, at least unless I miss something, we're not recommending snowmobiles on any sidewalks at all. And John will walk you through the concept maps that he has put together, John, our development director. In terms of, you know, council's, you know, role and what we're looking for, frankly, is if there are some questions that city council has, some ideas that city council may have, you know, this should be an opportunity to share them. Alternatively, and I should say, in addition to that, city council can certainly email John or myself, and then staff can work on, you know, other potential concepts or ideas to bring back at a future date as well. As I mentioned, there really isn't any, any pressure, you know, while we have a winter wonderland out there today, sort of coincidentally, we are, you know, again, sort of at the cusp of changing seasons, it's going to be spring, there are going to be operational things that we're going to have to do if we're even going to get into the business of having routes coming in, we're going to have to get signage, there's, you know, perhaps some public works things where we're going to have to change, you know, some grades on our turf and whatnot. So there are things that would have to be put in place in order to really do this, you know, the right way, perhaps next winter. So with that, John, if you wanted to maybe run through the concepts, that would be great.
Sure. Good evening, city council. I'd just like to start out adding on to what Marcus had said about there being no ideal route, and give you some of the premises for, or some of the goals or overarching design goals that these potential routes were built upon. Number one, to try to limit conflict between snowmobiles and walkers. And when I say walkers, I'm also talking about White Pine Trail, because that trail is also plowed and used quite a bit for walking and walking dogs and so forth in the wintertime. To limit the conflict between snowmobiles and auto traffic, so trying to keep some separation between through lanes, automobile traffic, and the snowmobile traffic. To limit the length of time snowmobiles would have to run either on streets or sidewalks, snowmobiles to some degree can navigate those surfaces, but it's not good to do that for a very long period of time. Working with Ken Payne in our DPW, he stressed the point of trying to get the snowmobile parking onto grass areas rather than onto concrete areas. To keep the routes as far away from residential development as possible, obviously due to noise considerations, and in that regard, there was not a great deal of opportunity to get to any substantial distance, but if you, as you see on the routes that I picked, I did the best that I could with that particular item. To keep the routes on publicly controlled land as much as possible, unless there's a willing private development or property owner which would be willing to accept the snowmobiles. And also recognizing that while Lake Cadillac cannot be considered a formal snowmobile route, to understand that the lake is used for snowmobiles and that offshoots from the lake may be a possibility to create opportunities. And with that, I could kind of just walk through. This first map just shows the White Pine Trail coming into the city, and it's my understanding that snowmobiles are allowed on the, on the trail outside the city. And it comes in on that trail for just a very short distance, and then it branches off into a very wide curb lawn between Sunnyside Drive and the White Pine Trail. And it'll hold that pattern for quite some time, so kind of creating its own independent route coming up Sunnyside Drive. Go to the second one. And it continues between Pearl and Granite Street on the same pattern, running essentially paralleling the White Pine Trail. There is no sidewalk in that area, so again, it's staying in the grass area. And then moving on to the next one, you have Granite to Pollard, and this is where there could be some options. I think option two, trying to maintain the parallel route along the White Pine Trail would be the optimal. If you were not going to do that, then there would be a segment that would be along sidewalk routing, which obviously wouldn't be preferred, so it's a question of digging in deeper on the design function as to whether the grading and other things could be addressed on option two route to make that possible. Also, both of those routes, when I get to Granite, would connect to a short connector route which would go into the Willow Mercantile. And you can see where both the option one and two meet at Pollard and Laurel Street. And you can see the straight shot, the Pollard Street is not a paved road, so depending on how they plowed that street, if they left a very shallow amount of snow, it would be a better situation of not tearing up pavement in terms of a route into the Willow Mercantile. And from Granite Street, then it proceeds all the way up to the library, and it stays parallel to the White Pine Trail. And similar to when we were talking about options for the extension of the Bike Path Trail, it proposes a crossing at Cottage Street, and then picks up, again, more of the old railroad right-of-way space controlled by the state, also space that we looked at for possible extensions for the White Pine Trail. We ended up, I think, with a preferred route in the street system, so this would allow that, that right-of-way to be used with, for snowmobiles rather than for walkers and bikers, which are now going to be an alternative route to the new trailhead. And again, this would go as far as the main library parking lot, and then it would have a short extension west, which could be a point where people could come off the lake and, into that space. And again, the yellow areas would be parking areas, and those parking areas, again, could be located on grass locations. Then moving on, there are two other short routes. One would be coming in just to the north of the city dock in the downtown, and it would make a very short run into City Park, where on the north side of the City Park, an area could be designated, again, on a grass area, and again, without a lot of distance to be traveled on paved pathways. So that would be one short extension. The other would be the boat launch, and the boat launch would have ability for people to bring snowmobiles in, they could either come off the lake or come in off of trailers, and again, in terms of a connection to GND, it would just come out to Lake Street, cross over by the Chamber Building, and then proceed west. And then you would have, again, two options, using one of the two alleys. If you look at option one, there's a fence along the south side of the GND property. If you came in that way, you would have to, they would have to put in a gateway to allow the snowmobiles into the property. And the other option would be to go to the north access alley and come in from the north side and work out with GND. I would assume that they probably would want to not commingle their car traffic with the snowmobile traffic, so probably near the building but outside the main parking area is where the parking lot is designated. So there's a lot of different options. I think this could be implemented in just one simple short route, a series of short routes, or a series of a long route and short route. So there's a lot of different options that you could look at in creating some kind of opportunity, depending on where you thought was most critical for the snowmobiles to go. Does anybody have any questions on that?
No, I don't, thank you.
So, you know, again, looking at process, right? You know, so the question was raised to staff, you know, there was feedback coming from downtown merchants, how do we, you know, how do we try to accommodate snowmobilers? Is there a way to do it? And looking at specifically Willow, as far, you know, as far south as Willow, and then as far north, generally speaking, is GND, was sort of the task presented to us as to how to, how to work something out. And that's where we came up with these concepts, which as I mentioned, you know, none of them are, none of them are perfect, but, you know, this is something where I think, you know, city council should, you know, noodle, if you will, and we can, you know, bring it back, we can do a work session, we can have bigger maps. If you guys have different ideas in terms of routing, or if you, you know, if you don't want to move it forward, that's okay too, but if you want to continue having the conversation, you know, if we're looking at doing something in time for next winter, there's certainly a lot of time to, you know, between now and then, so to get prepared for it.
I've, man, I absolutely. I've heard from a lot of folks about this, and usually I get called. I've heard from a lot of folks about this, and usually I get calls from, you know, two or three people about stuff. A lot of you folks, about the other ordinances which we will talk about. But as Mr., as Mr. Grant, I believe, Grant said that, you know, at the same time we're talking about looking at noise in the downtown area, we're talking about bringing snowmobiles into the downtown area. That seems a little counterintuitive to me. And I know it's been, you know, where I live, up by, up by Diggins Hill, I can, I can hear them sometimes on the lake. And I imagine, you know, I'm looking at these maps and looking at, even if there's a fence by an alley, there are snowmobilers that drive up my alley to go up Diggins Hill illegally. By the way, don't do that if you're listening to this. And it's so loud, and they're going slow, you know? But it's like, it's, it's all of a sudden, oh, there they are, you know? And so we're, any, like, like, like you said, John, all of these routes, we're trying to keep the, to a minimum residential areas, but those are the people, those people will be affected. And I think we need to, you know, think about everybody, even the folks on the unpaved street and with their alleys that butt up against these routes. And, and I realize that, that the downtown businesses, that this could help increase business. But I see, as we're coming back from the last two years of nobody going out, things are, things are cooking. Have you seen what's, yeah, I mean, down at Willow and at GND, they're always busy. And the downtown businesses, you have, how long is the wait at some of the places? So I don't think, you know, when, when we looked at trying to make accommodations to help our downtown merchants, when things were really depressed, I get that. But at this point, you know, I just, this just doesn't feel right at all to me. So that's just, that's my, my feeling.
What do you know?
You know, it's just...
What do you know? We agree on something.
Dude!
No, I mean, you've done a good job, John. Kind of like putting lipstick on a pig, you know? You, you did the best you could. I, I just don't see there's any way of doing it.
Thank you.
The, the right way. And, and the first thing that comes to mind, why did we ban snowmobiles from the streets anyway? There had to be a variety of good reasons when we did. And I, I just agree with you 100 percent. Too many negatives there. But thanks for your hard work, John. And Ken Payne.
Thank you.
Yeah, sorry.
I would just say that I really wanted to make snowmobiles downtown happen for downtown merchants. But I heard from a lot of people the last couple of weeks when this first came out. And, you know, noise being one of them, but also the damage that it can do to the infrastructure within the city. And, you know, that, that White Pine Trail that they're not allowed on right now is just a treasured point for a lot of people in the city of Cadillac to be able to walk down that beautiful strip of, you know, property that has, you know, trees and, and it allows that walk around the lake, if you will. You know, I looked at the routes that you came up with, John, and, and I know that you were really careful in doing that. And I looked at it and said, well, you know, why couldn't we bring them off the lake instead of bringing them down to Sunnyside, which is like the busiest, one of the busiest streets in Cadillac? And there's already so many issues as far as, you know, speed and noise on, on that route. You know, why couldn't we bring them off the lake down by the parking lot and then run them up behind Family Fair and then bring them straight down to the Willow? But that still affects people on that street behind the Willow, or, yeah, behind the Willow. There are still a lot of residents there. So I really got to thinking about this, and as much as I would love to see it happen, I think that we need to make this decision based on the people who live in the city of Cadillac and not necessarily on the snowmobilers that are coming up here and wanting to just get into our restaurants downtown. And I appreciate, we always do everything that we can to support our downtown businesses. But, you know, in this instance, we can, we can support the businesses out in Cadillac West. You know, we've got lots of, you know, we have several wonderful places that these snowmobiles could be on their snowmobiles, if that's what they want, is that direct route to a restaurant or a bar. And if they want to get downtown to the businesses, I feel like, you know, they have the ability to do that, like they're doing it now in their cars. And so, you know, I'm one of the, one of the people that brought this forward and said, Marcus, can we please think about this? But as we're talking about noise ordinances and we talk about snowmobiles, I'm not hearing anything positive about this thought from anybody that lives in the city. They like it the way that it is right now. And so I just, I just wanted to put that information out there and say that I don't even know that we should take it for, forward to a public hearing in a couple of weeks. I don't think that we're anywhere near that.
And there is, so just to advise, City Council has the authority, under your current code, to establish designated routes just simply by resolution. I'm not suggesting that you don't have a public hearing of sorts, but it isn't, it isn't required. And so, basically, council can really do, you know, whatever you, whatever you like. You know, you could take no action, and then if you ever want to talk about it again, just let me know. Well, we could bring it back up again. We now have at least a starting point in terms of...
Yep. And I really appreciate all the work that you did on it, John.
Oh, thank you.
But just based on the feedback that I heard from the citizens of Cadillac, I don't know that it's the right thing to do right now.
And Mayor, we did have, a number of years ago, we ran sort of a pilot, where City Council designated the parking area on the west side of Lake Street, just south of the Rotary Performing Arts Pavilion.
Right.
As a snowmobile lot. It was predicated on a volunteer group creating an appropriate pass-through for snowmobilers to get essentially off the lake and into that lot. And for a variety of reasons, including Mother Nature not really cooperating, the winter was not good enough, basically, for the snowmobilers to be able to, to use it. And then the, the volunteer group saying that they were not very comfortable putting their equipment on the ice to create the pass-through. The program really failed.
Right. They weren't comfortable leaving their expensive machines down on the lakefront, unsupervised, to go up to the businesses on Main Street.
But just, there was just some more background that, you know, we did over the last few years try something.
Right. Yeah, I remember that.
Thanks.
What does everybody think? Are you okay with...
Yeah, let's just drop it.
Okay.
You guys want to bring it back? Just let me know.
We will. Thank you.
Thank you.
Put it in a file.
Yep. Okay. May I?
Absolutely.
Okay. So, thank you, Mayor, and members of the City Council. Great example of a good policy discussion and, and how to, how to move that through from a process perspective. Next, next item is consideration of award for legal services. In the council communication...
Excuse me, can you not have side conversations so that people at home can hear what's being said? Thank you.
In, in the council communication, we summarized where we were and where we are today. Foster, Swift, Collins, and Smith is being represented here this evening by our lead attorney for the municipal practice group, Michael Homier, has been with us since 2010, without any adjustment to their rates for services. In accordance with City Council directive of, basically, a couple of months ago, we did put out an RFP for full-service law firms to respond to. The RFP sought firms that have municipal practice experience, as well as practice sections and/or multiple attorneys that would cover a wide variety of specialty areas, including general counsel services, environmental law services, labor and employment services, tax tribunal services, and bond and financial services. Five proposals were received. And as you could see in the council communication, it summarizes the results. The recommendation this evening would be to continue with Foster, Swift, Collins, and Smith, in accordance with the proposal and engagement letter, and also to make that retroactive to March 1st. It would just simply help with all of the billing for our services with them. As you'll see in the, in the chart, continuation of services with them is being recommended. They are fully compliant. They are a full-service firm with comprehensive municipal practice section and extensive municipal experience. Their bid for, our hourly rates is $200 for general employment and labor council, 250 for litigation. And the engagement letter is the same letter that we had previously presented to council a couple of months ago.
Okay. Would someone entertain that motion, or is there any discussion?
I'll make a motion to continue using Foster, Swift for legal services in accordance with their proposal and engagement letter.
And if we could do it retro to March 1st.
Retro to March 1st.
I'll second that.
Councilmember King, Shippers?
Yes.
Alambas?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
Mayor Falcons?
Yes. Motion carries.
I believe, our utilities director, yes, he is here in case there's questions with this next one. But we do need to acquire a 20-inch valve. The recommendation this evening, and this has to do with the wellfield shut-off services, or shutdown services that we're currently looking at doing is we decommission the original old wellfield in the heart of the original old industrial park. We do need to have a valve in place. Otherwise, when we go through that process, which we're going to be commencing somewhat soon, we'll actually be shutting off businesses at the same time, which is something that we really need to avoid at all costs from shutting down major industries. We were able to achieve various quotations, and the recommendation this evening is to waive the competitive bidding and award the purchase of an East Jordan Iron Works Flowmaster 20-inch valve to Michigan Pipe and Valve for $15,498. Funds are available in the water and sewer fund. That is the lowest quotation that we received of the four that came in.
I'd make a motion to waive competitive bidding regarding purchase of 20-inch valve.
Support.
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Alambas?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
King? Mayor Falcons?
Yes. Motion carries. And the second motion?
Oh, sure. Make a motion to award purchase, East Jordan Iron Works Flowmaster 20-inch Michigan Pipe and Valve in the amount of $15,498.
Support.
Councilmember Alambas?
Yes.
Ingles?
Yes.
King? Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Falcons?
Yes. Motion carries.
Uh, thank you, Mayor, members of City Council. Ready for the...
Yes.
So the next section of the agenda this evening is introduction of ordinances. These are a holdover from where we would have been a couple of weeks ago if not for the horrible ice storm that came in and pretty much shut everybody down. So I do apologize that this agenda is a little bit longer than, than, than normal. The next four ordinances are all somewhat related. The action that's being asked of City Council this evening is to set the public hearing. The public hearing for these next four ordinances would actually be at the council's next meeting, which would be March 21st. And for the benefit of anyone that might be here this evening, as well as for those that could be watching, as a part of a public hearing, members of the public actually have an additional opportunity to present comments to City Council as a part of that public hearing. Once those comments are then heard, that's when council will actually have their formal discussion and determine whether or not to, to vote, or to change anything, or to remand it back, or whatever the case might be. The city staff worked on developing a frequently asked questions document that is in the public agenda packet this evening. It's available online. It's also on the city's Facebook page in addition to our website. And it breaks down all four of the ordinances accordingly. And just, just for the purposes of sort of reading this into the, into the public record, the ordinances are regarding noisy or riotous persons, noise from motor vehicles, exhibition driving, and marijuana odors. And the reason why any of these are before City Council this evening has to deal with complaints that have been coming in somewhat regularly to the city regarding these various issues. And so there are some codes that are on the books that do deal with some of these issues, but not, not entirely. And, you know, for summary purposes, I'm going to try to do my best without getting too much into the weeds, because that's where we thought at the next meeting, we'd have our Director of Public Safety kind of walk you through all four of, all four of these ordinances. But I think, just to go through somewhat briefly, with respect to noisy or riotous persons, this is the ordinance where it lists, for example, activities that could be occurring in somebody's home. And it lists, again, as example purposes, prostitution, gambling, the illegal sale or illegal use of intoxicating liquor or controlled substances, or any other illegal activity. Right now, the city police are able to cite tenants that are living in a home, but not the property owner themselves. This would give the ability of citing the property owner, especially if the behavior is not changing. And so that's part of the background. And that's actually in the FAQs when you get into a, why, why are we looking at doing this? So with approximately 50 percent of single-family homes in Cadillac being rental properties, there are issues that the police department run into where they're not getting compliance. And so by being able to also potentially cite the property owner, and not just those that are the tenants of the property, it's another tool for the police department to be able to utilize in trying to get compliance and get things essentially cleaned up. Motor vehicle noise, right now, your city code regarding noise talks about noise coming from phonographs, from TVs, and from radios, coming from single-family homes or from other dwellings. It does not refer specifically to noise coming from motor vehicles. And so that's the reason why this amendment is being proposed, is so that, you know, there can actually be a citation issued that could have a better chance of standing up when it goes through the prosecutor's office in the court, if it ties back directly to an ordinance on our books referring to noise coming from motor vehicles. The exhibition driving ordinance, currently, people can get tickets for careless driving. People can get tickets for reckless driving. Generally speaking, you're required to commit at least a couple of offenses in order to get a careless driving ticket, as well as at least, I think, three offenses in some instances, in order to get citation for reckless driving. By creating this ordinance on the book, again, it gives another tool to the police department. It also gives a potential for a break, in a sense, to, to the violators. So this would allow somebody violating any one of those things to be able to get a ticket. It would reduce the number of points being assessed on their licenses, and again, gives the officer more discretion in terms of citing somebody with an offense that would be lesser than a careless driving offense and lesser than a, than a reckless driving offense. The marijuana odors, again, it was another complaint that came in about marijuana odors emanating from one location into a building that shared the same wall without there being any form of effort to ventilate at all. We already have a code on the books governing marijuana odors for industrial, like grow operations. Now, we don't have any industrial grow operations actually up and running yet, but, you know, when or if we do, there are already codes on the books that dictate odor management, odor mitigation. However, in the instance that we're, that we were dealing with a little bit earlier this, this year, late last year, there's really nothing that we have at all that are, in our toolbox, to use that term, to, to try to get compliance. And so, you know, there was one property owner complaining about another tenant in another building not doing anything to try to mitigate the smell. And this, this is something that we thought would be appropriate to present for your consideration. So again, the action that council is being asked tonight is to simply... So, again, the action that council is being asked tonight is to simply set the public hearings. And just to clarify, in no way, shape, or form, in any way, shape, or form, are we recommending that the city ban motorcycles, or ban classic cars or muscle cars, or prohibit people from cruising around town, you know, at all. There never was our intent to looking at banning motorcycles. The city is in the position currently to enforce the state law regarding decibel levels. Decibel levels currently are set by state law at, I believe, 80 decibels. That's MCL 257.707. And we do have to acquire decibel readers. We do not have any in our police cars. I don't think we've ever had any. In order for citations, should they be written to stick, but again, the complaints that we've been receiving, you know, have been, we've we got our windows shaken, whether they're at the house or at a business, you know, we're vibrating in our seats. We have, you know, people that are blowing diesel diesel exhaust, you know, on our patrons while they're eating in our sidewalk cafes, you know, is there what can we, you know, what can we do? Intentional acts, you know, not not people that are are just simply commuting from point A to point B through our community, but people that are intentionally acting in a in a behavior and in a way that's unbecoming. People that are intentionally revving engines and intentionally, you know, turning up the kicker boxes, you know, type of thing, you know, to to kind of rattle someone's teeth out. And so, you know, the reason why we're looking at at these ordinances is to be able to better provide our police department with the tools to to basically get the job done, so.
I have a I have a question.
Yep.
You know, there were a lot of folks who stood up during public comment tonight and voiced some concerns, and there were there were several things that were said that are not accurate. And so, I wondered, I I know we're setting the public hearing for two weeks from now, but I wondered if we could ask you to come forward, Adam, and just based on what you heard this evening, maybe...
I wrote it all down.
What? We've got it all written down. I do, too. You know, it's not an opportunity for discussion, but it is an opportunity for Adam to address some of the things, some of the concerns that you brought forward, so, thank you.
Mayor, council members, thanks for having me up here. And and members of the public, I, you know, there was a lot of things that got, I think, twisted over social media, which is why we put the facts on our website to try and mitigate some of this. Again, just like City Manager Marcus had said, these are complaints that come into the police department, and and these were some of the actions that we felt we could kind of curb some of the some of the problems that we're running into in the downtown with the businesses and and that kind of thing. Currently, like Marcus said, 257.707 already restricts motorcycle and vehicle noise limits. Currently, the motorcycle noise limit is 83 decibels, which is which is it it's very loud.
Eighty-six.
Is it eighty-six? Okay.
Eighty-six, so eighty-six if the maximum lawful speed on the highway is greater than 35 miles an hour, eighty-two if the maximum lawful speed is not more than 35 miles an hour.
Yeah. So, that that was the that was behind the the idea of, we also had an officer right under statute, and the the magistrate had found that the ordinance that was written under was specific to residential area or residence, and not necessarily coming from a motor vehicle. So, that was another issue that we we had had when when the officer goes to court, and then he's told that that it doesn't fall under that statute. And then, as as far as the marijuana odors, we we received that complaint. I reached out, spoke with our our city attorney and said, these are the this is the complaint, this is the complaint that we're having, you know, what can we what can we we do? And and so, that what was given to us was some examples of other municipalities and what they put on the books so that their law enforcement department can can enforce those those type statutes.
And this isn't enforcing that they cannot grow their own plants according with to the law, but just that they have to control the odor if it affects their neighbors in it like in apartment building or something?
That's correct. That's correct. The 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 complaint that came in was was rentals, and then the business next door, it was permeating into the business. And that was a complaint that came in, and and for manufacturing of marijuana, right now, they already have to have the carbon filters, they already have to have several things in place to prevent that odor from transitioning from one building to the next. And that was the idea behind the the marijuana ordinance.
One quick question.
Yes, sir.
The paragraph reads odor detectable in the ambient air is greater than a seven-to-one dilution threshold for two samples, or observations not less than 15 minutes apart within a one-hour period, measured by a field olfactometer device beyond the boundaries of a property. I guess, number one, do we have an olfactometer?
The answer is no, we do not.
About $4,000?
I don't know what the cost of that is.
Seen one before. It's $4,000. And then, Marcus? Who's going to be our stench detector? Who's going to run the olfactometer?
So, it would be a it would be a police function.
Police, it'd fall under your...
If a complaint comes in.
Okay.
Right? So, all of this is complaint-driven.
Right.
So, you know, and those are those are options. So, the other option would be if, you know, if complaint, well, excuse me. Right, so the odor detectable, you have to have a device that can measure that odor, which, just like with the decibel with the noise, we don't have one of those either. So, pending where all of this goes after the public hearing, we would then look at acquiring those appropriate devices in order to be able to officially document any kind of citation that goes out there. You know, it's anybody's guess how many complaints may or may not come in. You know, it's relatively new that we started receiving complaints in in commercial spaces where it's mixed use between residential and commercial. So, you know, it's, you know, this is just us trying to do our diligence to be able to respond effectively to it, and know that if we have to write a citation, it'll actually, you know, be upheld as it goes forward to the prosecutor's office and and even further. Without making these changes, we're we're sort of stuck, you know, we're dead in the water, so.
It was interesting, when I was in Anchorage, they did it the old-fashioned way with complaints like this. They sent two guys out to smell. Use this thing right here.
So, so this this section, this section that talks about this is sort of defining what is per se objectionable, right? So, it says if either of the following conditions are present, the first one of which is the seven-to-one dilution threshold, right? The second one, though, is the city receives three or more formal complaints from individuals or entities within a 24-hour period, and the complaints are related to a single odor source. And then, formal complaints filed by members of the same household would be considered one complaint, right? So...
And then, it won't matter what the meter reads. If you have enough complaints, the grower's going to lose.
Right. And then, and even then, the the what it says is that the individuals who cultivate have to take reasonable measures, and the reasonable measures then are use of activated carbon or charcoal filters, air purifiers, air filters, industrial odor control systems, biofiltration systems, and any other common industry method for odor mitigation.
For for indoor growing, I was wondering about the backyard people.
Yeah.
That's a different situation, if somebody has two or three. I mean, what does when neighbor doesn't like any amount of smell, but anyway, I guess we'll figure that out.
Well, you have to have several neighbors who don't want...
Are the complaints coming into the police department from people smoking or people growing?
It was a combination of both, coming from that specific complaint. There was a grow operation, and then I believe one of their customers probably lived right next door.
And then, like throughout the course of, you know, the year, do people complain about grow operations? Do they complain about smokers next door? Is that just is this just this one incident we're talking about, or?
This is this one incident that we're talking about.
Do I mean, do we have more? Do we have like a rate of occurrence?
However, however, we haven't approved any of the the plants yet.
Right.
For, so it's it's not only did we receive the complaint, we don't have anything on the books that would allow us to enforce anything either way. And then, and we still don't have, you know, the factories that are put up yet, so...
Which would be separate anyhow, because there's a separate ordinance that governs odor mitigation for industrial grow operations. But we have not had, at least to my knowledge, an issue of a lot of complaints, if any, coming in in the residential areas. Maybe we've just been lucky, or maybe people aren't aren't complaining. We did have one coming in again from our our central business district, where it's a mixed-use building where there's residential and commercial. The people in the residential were legally growing and and inviting, smoking, but without having any system in place to air it out or to prevent it from just seeping into the commercial space next door. And without us having anything on the books, there's nothing we can do other than say sorry, so. That's the, that's why we're here.
I wanted to talk about the, I guess I'm going to call it the third ordinance, the motor vehicle noise, the 16-144. Can I get that?
Sure.
This would be like page 64 of our packet up on the screen.
Which one is it?
This is the one that actually, it's the amend section 16-144. Where we're...
Vehicle noise?
It would be 64, yeah. So, it says our noise ordinance says the playing of any radio, television set, phonograph, music, or any musical instrument, including but not limited to, from a motor vehicle, that's the part we're trying to add, in any such manner or with such volume, particularly during the hours between 11:00 PM and 7:00 AM, or at any place or time as to annoy or disturb the quiet comfort and repose of persons in any office, or in any dwelling, hotel, or any other type of residence. Are these complaints, like when we're getting noise complaints, are we trying to force them within the course of the day? Do we focus on the 11:00 PM to 7:00 AM thing? Are we getting complaints from people at stoplights?
Our our noise ordinance allows us to go outside the 11 to 7.
Yeah.
But where this one seems to have failed is if you go to section nine, the current one specifically is radio and musical instrument, the playing of radio, television, phonograph, musical instrument in such a manner or with such volume, particularly during those hours, or at any time or place to annoy, disturb, quiet, in a repose of any person in any office or any dwelling, hotel, or type of residence. And it and so, the the updated version, including but not limited to, from a motor vehicle. That's the only section that we're adding so that the noise is coming from a motor vehicle also into that. So, we can cite for people in their residence that are disturbing the peace under that section, and also from somebody that's driving a vehicle that's disturbing the peace.
I guess my question is, it says particularly between the hours, like are we making an effort to, does most of our enforcement occur in the middle of the night, or does it occur in the middle of the day?
Most of the enforcement occurs at nighttime for loud parties.
Good.
Typically, you know, in the evening hours.
Do we get people calling? Go ahead.
I'm sorry, but we do get complaints during the day also, you know, and it, you know, there's a lot of midnight shifters, you know, and sometimes, you know, the the party time is different hours than would be for nine to five.
Now, are people complaining about the radios coming from cars, like separate from like a loud a loud exhaust?
Yes.
People are, and are those complaints occurring in the middle of the day, in the morning, at all times as well?
I would say during the day that that, you know, loud music, it occurs all the time. I don't want to say that it happens more at night than it does during the day. I I can't be sure of that. I could actually get the stats, and I could provide you with stats on that.
And I believe, and I guess maybe, Mike, you can correct me if I'm wrong, the ordinance doesn't restrict it to only being between those hours. That's just a, dare I call it, a legacy holdover from when this ordinance was originally put in place. We can change, we can strike hours from it entirely. It really doesn't, I don't think, make a difference to how the police department enforces it. If a complaint comes in because somebody says, hey, you know, someone is sitting out in front of my house and they're rattling my windows, you know, we're going to come out and probably just simply ask the person to to turn the radio down and not even issue a ticket. It's all of all of these are all under, you know, certainly officers' discretion as to how they wish to proceed when when they come out to to complaints that are raised, whether it's in a residential neighborhood or in a or in a business district. Am I right about the the time not being restrictive?
Yeah, it's just kind of a focus of the ordinance.
Well, someone that's lived next to a stock car driver in Cadillac, I quickly learned that don't even waste your time calling the police if it's before 11:00 PM. We're not going to do anything.
So, maybe we should strike those hours. And I can't call about my husband playing banjo then, right?
That goes for all banjo players, just saying.
Can we also put up the page 58 of the packet, which is the exhibition driving ordinance? So, I guess a lot of people asked why we're doing this. I know the only complaints that I get from people isn't usually regarding motorcycles. There are several loud trucks in the courtside district.
Sure.
That people consistently complain about. But the all this would be, when it says the emission of any unreasonable loud, like if they're like revving up the engine?
Yes, so this one is, so let me kind of back up just a minute. Careless driving, three points. Reckless driving, six points. Exhibition driving, two points.
So, this specifically, like Marcus was saying, gives us a tool to give someone a lesser slap on the wrist?
Correct. And and knowing that we're, you know, having issues in the downtown with the the loud the loud music coming from the vehicles, the fishtailing, the what we would call exhibition driving, where you're, you know, swerving in and out of traffic, yeah, depending on the officer and depending on the the seriousness of the violation, they could hit it with a careless, they could hit it with a reckless, but giving them another tool in the toolbox that would allow them to write, you know, an exhibition driving less than a careless or a reckless was the intent behind this one. And and, you know, this is this is what we commonly see with with the teenage youth, you know, coming through the downtown is is this type of behavior. Now, like I said, if if it became, you know, increasingly more out of control, then we would, you know, obviously enforce the careless, the reckless, the three-point, the six-point, you know, and I believe 12 points is suspended.
I see, so the point number six on here says the emission of any unreasonably loud, disturbing, unnecessary noise. So, the word unnecessary, like not in the course of normal operation. Do people own vehicles and have to take them out to their properties out here that are too loud to be on the road? They have to make it from point A to point B? Or like where it was where it's a necessary noise, where you're going to be telling people that they can't drive their vehicle at all on the road? Or are these all unnecessary things that people are doing?
Well, the Michigan Motor Vehicle Code requires that your mufflers are maintained and intact, and that they're in proper working order. And it also makes it illegal to, you know, remove baffles and and do that kind of thing to make it unreasonably loud. I would say that what we're looking for in this statute, which was taken from a statute from another municipality, is again, just to, if you have two or three of these things, we can issue the the exhibition. Now, the other thing that we could do, the rapid acceleration, that's easy. It's speeding, or it's or it's drag racing, the squealing, peeling, and burning of tires. You know, that's that's careless. We could just write careless right on number two. But having that additional tool in the toolbox is what we're looking at.
Yeah, and you know, maybe if you don't mind me jumping in for... Yeah, and, you know, may, if, if, if you don't mind me jumping in for a moment, I think, you know, as our public safety director is, is trying to clarify, you know, we're not looking at restricting motorcycles or muscle cars, or classic cars, or antique vehicles, or anything that's lawfully registered and licensed in the state of Michigan. You know, anything that's lawfully registered and licensed in the state of Michigan to be driven on, uh, public roadways is fine. You know, they're, they're not gonna, you know, it's not, it's not an issue. It's, it's the, it's the motorists that's driving something that they perhaps modified that is not lawful, and then furthermore is doing something to cause attention, to, to create a complaint from coming in. So, you know, pretending for just a moment here, as I give what could be an outlandish example, somebody is coming into town, they're driving a motorcycle, or they're driving a, a car, or they're driving a truck, uh, and, you know, may, maybe they, they, they don't have the, a, a lawfully licensed, uh, vehicle anymore because they modified the muffler, took the muffler off, whatever the case is, but is otherwise, you know, not doing anything to cause attention, not revving the engine, not, not, you know, causing a disturbance. Um, I, I can't imagine necessarily anybody, um, calling a complaint. If a complaint were to come in, or if an officer were to think that there's something out of sorts, that, that's when this would give that officer the ability of then, if they so choose to, to write a citation or a ticket under a section of code that is, um, less painful than what otherwise could be, which would be under a careless or reckless type driving. So, I don't know if that, if that helps at all, or clarifies a little bit. But that's, that's the background of this. Complaints that, you know, I know that have, that have been phoned into me, that I receive when I go into establishments, you know, they're all, you know, they're all verbal, you know, you know, my guy, did you see that, or did you hear that? You know, our windows were shaking, you know, five minutes ago because somebody, you know, parked in front of here while they were waiting for a light and just turned up the radio to make everything really vibrate and shake around them. Or, you know, they just blew, you know, intentionally blew diesel, diesel smoke on us as we were sitting at the outdoor, uh, outdoor cafe. Isn't there anything that the Cadillac, you know, Cadillac can do about it? And, you know, that's, that's why we're here talking about these tonight, so.
Thank you for letting me put you on the spot.
No problem.
Thanks, I appreciate it.
And, uh, assuming the council looks at setting the public hearings, you know, honestly, it's not, not like the information's gonna change from tonight to, to weeks from tonight. Uh, but the plan was to, to simply have our public safety director go through basically the, the frequently asked questions document for that presentation, um, a couple of weeks from now.
Right, and I would also encourage folks, if, you know, based on the document, the FAQ, and, you know, what they've heard this evening, if there's still concerns or questions, I would encourage people to reach out to the city staff, um, and have some discussion before the next.
I'd be happy to do that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, all right.
Guess, yeah, I mean, I'm, um, prepared to bring these ordinances to, um, to, you know, to approve them for public comment next time, you know, I, I don't know if they'll stay this way. I don't, you know, we definitely would like to hear more from people. I think, um, the stuff online that was alerting, you know, Harley drivers, or, you know, misleading, um, people, I think it was hard to get, uh, good feedback with, without getting, um, our intentions out there and what we thought we were gonna do first. So I think a second round of feedback, you know, whether you show up at the public comment period or whether you call us, um, is definitely gonna be important for all of these, so.
All right, would someone like to entertain the first motion?
I will make a motion to adopt the resolution to introduce ordinance to amend section twenty-two dash ninety-nine of the city code regarding nosey, noisy or riotous persons and set a public hearing for March twenty-first, twenty-twenty-two.
I'll support.
Councilmember Ingalls?
Yes.
King?
Shippers?
Yes.
Alabas?
No.
Mayor Folkins?
Yes, motion carries.
And I will make a motion to adopt the resolution to introduce ordinance to amend section forty dash twenty-five of the city code regarding exhibition driving and set a public hearing for March twenty-first, twenty-twenty-two.
Support.
Councilmember King? Shippers?
Yes.
Alabas?
No.
Ingalls?
Yes.
Mayor Folkins?
Yes, motion carries.
Looks like I'm up again. I will make a motion to adopt the resolution to introduce ordinance to amend section sixteen, one four four of the city code regarding motor vehicle noise and set a public hearing for March twenty-first, twenty-twenty-two.
Support.
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Alabas?
No.
Ingalls?
Yes.
King? Mayor Folkins?
Yes, motion carries.
Seeing as how we have nothing on the books for the next one, I'd make a motion to adopt the resolution to introduce ordinance to add section twenty-two dash one thirty-nine to the city code regarding marijuana odor mitigation and set a public hearing for March twenty-first, twenty-twenty-two.
Support.
Councilmember Alabas?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
King? Shippers?
Yes.
Mayor Folkins?
Yes, motion carries.
Uh, thank you, mayor, and members of the city council. The final introduction of an ordinance this evening, I believe it's the final, let me just double-check my paperwork here.
No, there's.
Second to the final.
Two.
Yeah, second to the final. Uh, is in regard to, uh, authorization of the sale of real property or a portion thereof located at five fourteen Wright Street. Five fourteen Wright Street is the former, uh, Mitchell Bentley property. And for reference, uh, back in February of twenty-twenty, uh, the city and the Cadillac Industrial Fund officially entered into, uh, an agreement that allows for the conveyance of that property, uh, to the Cadillac Industrial Fund that's been officially approved and executed and actually recorded against the deed of the property. Um, the, uh, city, uh, process, though, does require that we also do that by ordinance. Uh, and as the industrial fund, uh, is looking at essentially completing their file on that whole property, having it basically I's dotted and T's crossed, so that, um, uh, we can convey it to them is, is something that they've requested that we do. So, uh, otherwise, it would potentially delay the transfer, um, transfer of the sale and redevelopment of the site. Uh, go ahead.
I have a quick question.
You're done?
Yeah. Okay. Uh, section two of the proposed ordinance authorizes the mayor and the city clerk to execute any and all documents and take any and all actions necessary or appropriate to close upon the sale of real property to the fund for its designee for a sale price of ten percent of the net profits from a subsequent sale of the real property by the fund.
Yes.
Now, this is the piece of property where the marijuana grow is going, so we've talked about before.
We've talked about, there's nothing definite. It could be anything, to be honest with you, council member.
Okay, so are we giving this property away, or how much money are we? I see it says ten percent of the net proceeds from subsequent sale.
Right.
Explain it.
So, so the subsequent sale would be the sale that would subsequently, or happen after the property is transferred to the industrial fund. So, the industrial fund would then be responsible for selling the property. Uh, the city would then receive a ten percent, uh, portion of whatever that sale price is, uh, to, to us, you know, to our coffers. We did not, um, pay to, to obtain this property. This property was defaulted, uh, on, and we received after it failed to sell as a part of a salvage auction that the, that Wexford County, uh, that Wexford County did. And the, um, agreement that was approved back in two thousand and twenty, identified and listed the terms of the sale, which, which is the reference to the ten percent, uh, amount to the city.
Okay. One last thing, I gotta, I have to add this. It's a huge mistake putting a grow facility in a residential neighborhood. That's, that's all. It's in people's backyards, it's a residential neighborhood.
Well, I need to clarify, the, the property is zoned.
I know what it's owned, but it's in people's backyards.
So.
It's right in people's backyards.
As is most of our industrial park.
No, you're opening up a can of worms, people. I'm sorry, but this, this will come to a head when their first crop is ready for harvest. But you okayed it, so let's run, go ahead.
Well, again, there, there is no use yet, identified for the site.
Yep.
It's a matter of getting the books straight, so.
Okay.
I will make a motion to adopt the resolution to introduce the ordinance to authorize sale of real property, a portion of five fourteen Wright Street, and set a public hearing for April fourth, twenty-twenty-two.
Support.
Councilmember Ingalls?
Yes.
King? Shippers?
Yes.
Alabas?
No.
Mayor Folkins?
Yes, motion carries.
Uh, thank you, uh, mayor, and members of the city council. Uh, this next item, uh, is sort of what I just said about getting, getting our books straight, is really, um, all about that. As you can see in the council communication, uh, there's an aerial picture showing, uh, the Don's, um, uh, car dealership, and the request, the Don's Auto Clinic Car Dealership. The request is a rezoning request, uh, to have that entire property all zoned, uh, the same. A, a very small portion of that, and is there a way we can get that on the map, please, or on the screens? The communication where it shows the image?
Page eighty-one.
Eighty-one?
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you.
There it is.
So the map highlights the area in red, um, that this rezoning, uh, request identifies, changing it from, um, uh, mobile home, uh, residential mobile home, or RMH, uh, classification to, uh, to B three, which is, uh, general business district. Uh, as the communication identifies, uh, the, uh, dealership owns all of that property, uh, at this point in time, uh, and the home is, is no longer there, it was already removed, so. This was, uh, approved by your planning commission, uh, and then the next process is for council to consider the planning commission's recommendation. Uh, and at this point, it would be appropriate to set a public hearing for April, uh, fourth, which is your, your first meeting in April.
I would make a motion to adopt the resolution and introduce ordinance amending the city zoning map and set a public hearing for April fourth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Support.
Councilmember King? Shippers?
Yes.
Alabas?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
Mayor Folkins?
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you, uh, we do have one resolution, uh, this evening, mayor, and members of the city council, for you guys, uh, to consider. Uh, it's a request to adopt a resolution for local governmental approval for a downtown Development Authority or DDA liquor license for the GND liquor store. Uh, city council has been asked and has, um, approved these in the past. I believe the last one may have been for, uh, Raven Social. Uh, there is in your public packet this evening a state resolution form. Um, so it's not something that we've created, uh, but this would allow for the GND, uh, liquor store, or, or, which is their official name, but the, the pizza shop, to be able to obtain what's called a community development liquor license, uh, from the state of Michigan that would allow them to, uh, serve, uh, alcohol, um, inside their facility like, uh, like any other restaurant. It's, it's our understanding that they are looking at having, um, restaurant-type service, um, in, uh, in their building, or perhaps even, um, event, a potential event space in that, in that facility. Uh, and this would be a license that would allow them to look at expanding services, uh, from what they currently offer today.
I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution for local government approval for a DDA liquor license for GND liquor store.
I'd second that.
Councilmember Shippers?
Yes.
Alabas?
Yes.
Ingalls?
Yes.
King? Mayor Folkins?
Yes, motion carries.
Okay. All right, um, tonight we do have in our packets the minutes and reports from the, uh, eight twenty-one meeting of the Downtown Development Authority, and also the eleven twenty-nine, twenty-one meeting for the Planning Commission, uh, just for, uh, your review, um, as you are able. At this time, we'll open the floor for our second public comment. Everything is the same as the first public comment.
Uh, David McMahon, again, I just wanted to commend the council for your attempt to, uh, find routes for snowmobiles into the city, even though what I heard tonight is it's a dead issue. Um, for years, we have, uh, ridden into, uh, Meesick, Fife Lake, Reed City, Chase, Tustin, Leroy, uh, and I just have to just make the comment, it is sad that, uh, for a county seat town that promotes ourselves as a four-season community, uh, that we don't have the access to be able to get to the major portion of our community, even through Lake Street, to get to, uh, the restaurants, bars, whatever else that are, that are there. A snowmobile with people from the Holly Road area and George Street, whatever else, it is illegal for them to take their snowmobile from their garage and drive across Sunnyside Drive to get to the White Pine Trail by Love Inc., uh, and head south. And one guy has to rent, uh, access at the Boone Road, uh, storage facility to put his snowmobiles there and travel almost an hour to get to the south side of heading down the White Pine Trail. So, um, it, it's just, uh, to me, a, a sad thing, uh, and, uh, I, I, I wish it wasn't so. Uh, but I commend you for the attempt, and, uh, pray that it's not a dead, dead issue. As my southern relatives would say, bulldog can whip a skunk, but it ain't worth the stink. So I'm not gonna cause any more stink on that one.
Thank you.
That's a good one.
I like that one.
No, I never heard that.
Hi, I'm Amanda Phillips. Uh, firstly, I wanted to thank you for tabling the snowmobile discussion. Uh, opposite point of view here, I live on Granite Street, have lived there for thirty-eight years. My family's been there forty-two years, and we have had constant trouble with snowmobile noise in the middle of the night, waking us, and also property damage from snowmobiles being stuck in our driveway two years ago illegally on our sidewalk, and their studs tore up the concrete pretty good there. Also, I fear for the safety of the twenty-plus children that I personally know in our small block of twenty-three houses on Granite Street if snowmobiles are allowed in pedestrian areas. I appreciate that being tabled. Uh, I also took some notes, so I wanted to thank you for clarifying the intent, intent of the other proposed ordinances, uh, but I also want you to consider carefully the verbiage of those so that they are clarified going forward for everyone else who wasn't here this evening. Um, and how much of our time is being spent on working on things that are small disruptions, like one complaint about marijuana odor, compared to things that have maybe more complaints, like noise disruptions for base and vehicles that are passing through or are sitting in driveways? I know that, uh, that happens a lot in our neighborhood, and a lot of people don't like it, a lot of people do. Um, but as, uh, Mr. Alabas said, the noise ordinance is not really enforced until eleven PM. Uh, we found that out before. Um, my biggest concern with that is the decibel levels for our pets. I know that's silly, but if, if my hearing's not that great, I'm sure it frightens my dog pretty well. Uh, I don't have any intent to legislate that, but whatever you wanna do going forward, please make sure that it is very clearly stated, so that other people would understand it, and there won't be as many mix-ups as there were, uh, this week, clearly. Uh, as far as marijuana odor goes, I wonder about enforcing that. Would you also be enforcing other odors, such as manure in your garden, in your hobby garden at home? That's kind of an offensive odor to some people, too. So where do you draw the line, and what's an offensive odor and what isn't? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name's Rosemary McConnell. I crossed out a lot of stuff after I listened, because there was a lot of, not just misinformation, but, um, I wish there was a way that you could get out information, not just online, but to the general public somehow, um, so that you don't have people showing up that are upset for no re, undue reasons. I do have a question. It has to do with the utilities department, the water bill and all that. The audit results, that was by Joe Verlin. I believe he said there was a surplus of two-plus million, two million plus, is that right? So, I wondered if there was any access to this? Can I get that through the F and FAQ and all that online? And the packet that he was, the bound thing that he had, is that just for you, council? Or is that for public access, too? That was my question. And then the other is- And then the other is, and then the, well, the other is, if I do go home and then go online and do the FAQ, am I going to find those ordinances in detail about property owners? Example that Mr. Petcha said was, the one was just to, they can only cite tenants, this will make it so that you can cite property owners, too. Will I, will it be in detail, so, you know, I don't have to come back and have more questions? That's all, not that I don't want to, but I hate doing this.
Thank you. Hopefully, I can answer your questions at the end of the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
I was here earlier. Kind of touched base with that lady right there touched on. Um, need to be careful, we just start citing homeowners for something that the renters do, because we don't have a lot of control as rental, if we own rental property, we don't have a lot of control to kick people out. We have to go through the court system, because basically the renters have more rights than we do. Especially through these COVID times, people didn't pay rent, there was no way to get them out. Even the court system wouldn't do it. So like you, you're working on, I understand, you're doing a great job, just like you said, the verbiage of how the ordinances are going to work is going to be very, very important. And I want to tell you, these guys do a great job. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no one else, we'll close public comment and move to the good of the order, and if, if anybody has anything.
Do I?
I don't.
You're quiet tonight?
Yes.
Well, I'd like to thank everyone for coming and voicing their opinion, I like to see that. I appreciate it, your input's always welcome. Number two is, with all the sewer and water fund we have, the extra money, hopefully we won't raise the rates this year. There you go, wouldn't that be nice? And I did something, something very simple this morning that made me happy. I took a blue sheet of paper and a yellow, and hung it in my window. So, it's not much, but it's all you can do. Thank you.
Do you have anything to add?
Um, I, I would like to thank Adam and for clarifying all this. I know, boy, oh, boy, I, I remember rumors when they went through the, over the back fence, and now a rumor turns into a monster in about 40 clicks. And I would just like to tell everybody that if you hear stuff like this, please reach out, and the city will always give you information and, and tell you, you know, you don't have to, I know this created so much stress and anxiety for people, I, I understand that. If I, if I thought that, you know, that my ability to use my vehicle was, was being infringed upon, I would have a fit, too. So, don't wait, reach out, and you'll sleep better before, and then come to the meetings. We're not, don't be afraid to come to the meetings, please do that. But, and also, Owen, again, thank you for the great job with finances. I remember at the start of the pandemic, we were all so terrified that we were going to lose our shirts, that we didn't even want to get the new sign out by the pavilion, you know, we got away, we got a pinch pennies. And you're just, your masterful management of city finances is, is a real testament to our, the percentages and stuff that we have.
I certainly can't take all the credit, but I appreciate that.
As a good leader always says. Thank you.
I also wanted to say, you know, as a city, you know, we welcome the car shows, we welcome the bike shows, like this community is a friend of motorcycles, a friend of classic cars. Like I don't, you know, know where anybody would get the opposite, you know, impression, so I wanted to make that clear.
So, thank you, and, exactly, can't be, yeah, yeah, you know, can't, can't be iterated enough, that intent behind all of those proposed court enforcement-related ordinances have nothing to do with banning motorcycles or, or other cars at all. And so I would encourage everybody, if you, if you want to see some of the additional information, they were, it was also available for the media, I don't know, Chris, if you've got the link I forwarded, but the city's website is cadillac-mi.net, and if you were to be on that homepage, the pub, the entire full public packet would be found under city council agendas, so at the bottom of the page, you just click that button for city council agendas, and then today's date, and so within that packet will be all of the ordinances in their, you know, in their full, that includes all of the information that was being talked about tonight, including the FAQs. The FAQs are also separated right under news and announcements, which is right in the middle of the page, right on the homepage, and we also posted a link on the city's Facebook page to those FAQs as well, just as an effort to try to get, you know, try to get more clarification out there. Regarding the annual comprehensive financial report, or the audit, if you were to click the city departments header and go under financial services, there's a breakout section for financial reporting, and then a link right at the top that says, see the latest, well, I'll actually go there myself and tell you exactly what it says. It says, under financial reporting, most, view most recent, and so if you click view most recent, it'll take you right to a link to a PDF of the audit that was presented on tonight, so.
And if that sounds complicated, send the city an email, and we'll send you the link.
Send you the link.
Yeah, right. Yeah, I mean, but it's, it's all there.
And the packet, the packet is 95 pages, but you can click to those specific ordinances by pulling up that packet, it has links to click right to them, so you don't have to read the whole thing, like we do.
Yeah, you know, I would just add that there was some really great discussion tonight, and I am grateful for everybody that showed up this evening. You know, social media can be our friend, but social media can also lead us down a path and get us emotional about things that, you know, perhaps if we had all of the correct information and had the opportunity to, you know, have a, have a positive discussion, it wouldn't, it would be a whole lot less stressful for people. So, you know, I would encourage anyone that's here, or anyone that is watching from home, or anyone who reads the, the minutes from this meeting, to always reach out to a council member or a member of staff if you want to just talk through something. I appreciated every phone call, every email, and every conversation that I had over the last several weeks in regards to snowmobiles, and I was one of them that really wanted to see snowmobiles downtown. But it's important in our role here on the council to represent the citizens of Cadillac. And so, we're always going to have to make decisions, somebody's not going to be happy. But each and every one of us loves our community, and we want to do what's best to bring the community together. And so, thank you again very much for coming and understanding and taking away what you've learned tonight, and maybe share that with three or four or five people to ease some concerns of others in the community. We really appreciate it, thanks. With that, we'll go ahead and adjourn.